Go ahead and call this meeting of the Mobley City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Hans, please call the roll.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scubick.
Here.
Okay, everybody should have had a chance to review the agenda for tonight's meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Tonight's agenda has been approved. Also in your packet should have had the minutes from the last city council meeting. Any changes or corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. The minutes stand approved as written. Okay, next on the ballot, or on the ballot, next on the agenda. Canvas of the ballots, we have the certification of the April 8th, 2025 election municipal election results. And we'll turn that over to Ms. Hans from this point forward.
The canvas of ballots for the municipal election held on April 8th, 2025 was conducted by the county clerk Terry Maddox and the designated verification board. For councilman three-year term, the county clerk has certified that the following election results for the office of city councilman three-year term, Mike Scubick received 368 votes. Brandon L. Lucas received 396 votes. Based on the certified canvas, Mike Scubick and Brandon L. Lucas are declared elected to serve as councilmen for the city of Mobley for three-year terms. Ballot measure Mobley question one. Ballot language was shall the city of Mobley, Missouri extend the imposition of a sales tax of one-half of 1% for transportation purposes for a 15-year period? There were 342 votes for and 161 votes against. Based on the certified results, the measure is approved and the one-half of 1% sales tax for transportation purposes is extended for an additional 15-year period. We recommend that the city council formally acknowledge receipt of the certified election results and enter them into the official record with a vote.
Thank you, Ms. Hans. I was wondering if you could just read the results again from just the council members? That's just not necessary. It's not necessary. Okay, we'll entertain a motion. You gotta give the new guy a hard time, you know? We'll entertain a motion to certify the election results.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The election results have been certified. Okay, at this time, since we have new council members, it's time to elect new officials and new officers. So entertain a motion to adjourn, to sign and die, and appoint temporary chairman Bogowski to head the meeting. So we need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. We are adjourned.
Thanks, sir. At this time, I would ask Mike Scubick and Brandon Lucas to approach forward here with the city clerk Shannon Hans to administer the oath of office.
Please raise your right hand. I state your name. Do solemnly swear that I possess all the qualifications prescribed by law for the office of city councilman of the city of Mobley, that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, the provisions of all laws of this state affecting cities of the class to which the city of Mobley belongs, and the ordinances of the city of Mobley, and that I will faithfully perform the duties of my office to the best of my ability. All right, congratulations.
Thank you. I will now call this meeting to order and ask that the clerk calls the roll.
Lucas.
Here.
Kimmons.
Here.
McEwen.
Here.
Graff.
Here.
Scubick.
Here.
Thank you. At this time, I will open nominations for the election to mayor.
Yes, I nominate Brandon Lucas.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that nomination?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations for mayor? Hearing none, I will close this and open it to vote at this point. There has been a motion to appoint Brandon Lucas as the mayor and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Mr. Lucas has been elected mayor and will preside over the remainder of the meeting.
Thank you. Thank you all for your support for another year. At this time, we need to elect a mayor pro temp. This time, I'd like to nominate Mr. John Kimmons to fill that position for the next year. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Are there any other nominations for mayor pro temp? Hearing none, we'll head into a vote. So all those in favor for Mr. Kimmons for the mayor pro temp position signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Congratulations, Mr. Kimmons.
Sure.
Good man. Thank you. Before we kind of get rolling here into the normal meeting, just, you know, to kind of summarize, you know, the last, the last year. It's, uh... It's been a good year. We've had a lot of really good things happen. We've finished a lot of really good infrastructure projects. Brought a new city manager into the mix and, and he did about as good of a job as a first-year, you know, somebody coming in, learning the ropes could do. And we're really proud of that. We're also really proud of the team that we've built. We've had to replace some department heads. We've had to move some things around and move some different people around. I think that's one of the, one of the accolades that I take pride in and the council takes pride in is our people. We've just got really good people and they're doing a really great job. They're energetic and they, they... The camaraderie is good. And so we thank everyone for that, from this group down to all of your various employees and staff members. So please, please pass that along from the council. The other thing that I, that I've really heard a lot throughout town is the transparency. And that was one of the things that we set out as a goal in the very beginning, well, beginning of last, last term. A lot of people in the community have come up and said thank you for, for being as transparent as we've been. We're trying to tell the city's story. We're trying to control the narrative of the city. And people are recognizing that. So I feel like when people see that, they can see all the positive. And then it doesn't become a negative situation or they come up with their own narrative. When we're telling the story, that's what's important. And so thank you for all, for, for helping with that. Thank you to our, our PR guy for, for helping with that. And we just look forward to another really great year and we thank you guys for all that you do. So we'll leave it at that. We'll get right into the meeting. Recognition of visitors. Mr. Bogowski.
No visitors this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, if there's anybody here to speak to the council, please come up and see the clerk. Grab a green card, fill out your name and your address. And when the appropriate time towards the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll call you, we'll call you up in a little bit. You'll have four minutes to address the council at that time. Okay, number nine, communication requests and informational items. Consideration of a request for a street closure at the Fourth Street between Rollins and Reed for a wedding on June 28th at the Fourth Street Theater. We had an explanation on this last week. So unless there's any questions from council, we'll just entertain a motion to approve the request.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. Street closure has been approved. Sounds like it'll be a fun wedding. Okay, public hearing and receipt of bids, number 10. Receipt of bids for the 2025 Reclamite and Restorative Seal CRF project. Okay, we need a motion to accept the bids, please.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Bids have been received. Next on the list is our consent agenda. Includes items 11 through 24. These items are considered routine and will be adopted with a single vote. Is there any council member who wishes to remove a particular item for separate discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor for the reading of the consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Ms. Hans, first and only reading, please.
Bill number R. 1801. A resolution authorizing a lease termination agreement between the city of Mobley, Missouri and Accelerate LLC and approving a new lease agreement between the city of Mobley, Missouri and Alpha Ag Innovation for 3555 East Outer Road at the Omar Bradley Airport and approving a consent to assignment of said lease to County Bank. Bill number R. 1802. A resolution accepting bids and authorizing contracting for the 2025 Street Improvement Restorative Seal Project. Bill number R. 1803. A resolution authorizing a funds transfer from the General Fund to the Health Trust Fund to maintain a minimum balance of $150,000 and further authority. Bill number R. 1804. A resolution accepting a permanent roadway easement for the Route EE Sidewalk Improvement Project. Bill number R. 1805. A resolution partially repealing resolution number R. 1384 regarding housing and utility assistance for commissioned police officers and civilian communication officers. Bill number R. 1806. A resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a lease extension agreement between the city of Mobley and Larry Sander. Bill number R. 1807. A resolution permitting the Mobley Rotary Club to locate and operate a carnival in downtown Mobley from June 11th to June 14th, 2025 and the closure of downtown streets and the operation of a beer garden during the 19th Annual Railroad Days. Bill number R. 1808. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a gear reducer and motor from Municipal Equipment Company Incorporated for the grit chamber repair at the wastewater treatment plant. Bill number R. 1809. A resolution authorizing the purchase of a Kubota compact tractor for the Distribution and Collection Division of the Public Utilities Department. Bill number R. 1810. A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Clean State Revolving Fund Program for a Regional Integrated Management Plan Grant under the Missouri Clean Water Law, Chapter 644 RSMO for connection of Cairo, Missouri and Jacksonville, Missouri wastewater systems. Bill number R. 1811. A resolution authorizing the filing of an application with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources Clean State Revolving Fund Program for an Integrated Management Plan Grant under the Missouri Clean Water Law, Chapter 644 RSMO. Bill number R. 1812. A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a drinking water state revolving fund loan application for replacement of 16-inch water mains on Morley Street South. Bill number R. 1813. A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a drinking water state revolving fund loan application for replacement of six- and eight-inch water mains on Logan Street. And bill number R. 1814. A resolution of the city of Mobley, Missouri authorizing an application to the Missouri Department of Natural Resources for a drinking water state revolving fund loan application to construct a regional lift station.
I was wondering if you could repeat that? Do we have any, any questions regarding any of the items on the consent agenda? I do not have a question. I just have one, one comment in regards to the resolution authorizing the funds transfer from the General Fund Health Trust Fund. I know we'd made a comment last, last meeting that if we could just make an indication on the report that we get every month, if that has happened or if it hasn't happened. So we can just kind of see if, you know, what's been transferred. So I didn't figure that needed to be included in the wording, but I just wanted to remind everyone of that. Any additional questions regarding anything on the consent agenda? Any comments? We have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor for the approval of tonight's consent agenda signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. The consent agenda has been approved. Okay, next on the list, number, ordinances and resolutions, number 25 in ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding establishing a joint special weapons and tactics unit between the city of Mobley Police Department and the sheriff of Randolph County, Missouri. I ask that it be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motioned and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding establishing a joint special weapons and tactics unit between the city of Mobley Police Department and the sheriff of Randolph County, Missouri.
Any additional questions from council? Any comments? Second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a memorandum of understanding establishing a joint special weapons and tactics unit between the city of Mobley Police Department and the sheriff of Randolph County, Missouri.
Thank you. Final chance. Any other questions or comments? We have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 26, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Nicholas Davidson for property located at 301 North Buchanan and in a adjacent parcel on Collins Avenue. And I ask that that be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Nicholas Davidson for property located at 301 North Buchanan and an adjacent parcel on Collins Avenue.
Any additional questions from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Nicholas Davidson for property located at 301 North Buchanan and an adjacent parcel on Collins Avenue.
Any additional questions or comments? Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas.
Yes.
Kimmons.
Yes.
McEwen.
Yes.
Graff.
Yes.
Scubick.
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 27, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution accepting the proposal of and authorizing contracting with Mid Continental Restoration Company, Inc. for repairs to the municipal auditorium. I ask that it be read once for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance, or the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First reading, please.
A resolution accepting the proposal of and authorizing contracting with Mid Continental Restoration Company Incorporated for repairs to municipal auditorium.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from council? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution has been approved. Number 28, a resolution.
Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between April 4th, 2025 and April 16th, 2025 in the amount of $724,083.24. I ask that it be read once for consideration.
We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri to pay expenses due between April 4th, 2025 and April 16th, 2025 in the amount of $724,083.24.
Thank you. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd. Do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution is approved. Thank you. Okay, moving on to department head official reports. So for those of you that are new in the audience, we each month ask the department heads to kind of fill us in on some of the things that are happening or some of the items that they've been working on and some of their staff have been working on. Just so we're kind of in the know and get an idea of what's going on in each department. So I believe that we've got a few questions for a few department heads. Anybody want to start off? Yeah, go ahead.
So Tom, on your report, you mentioned the occupancy ordinance committee. That's great that, that we're going through that. Just curious on timeframe on that, not, not to pin you down on when that might be, but just kind of an idea of when some recommendations might be made.
We have got a report basically compiled where we've gotten input from the board members and I've kind of put that into a summary. And so I actually was talking to Mark and Carl about today. So hopefully get that wrapped up and sent out back to the committee members to review it and make sure that everything looks in line with what they were saying and what was the consensus was from the group and was there on board with that. We'll pass that on to the council. But there, there were comments, thoughts and recommendations that were all kind of included in that.
Thank you.
Sir, did you have, you had one?
Yeah.
You didn't have one? I had one for Mr. Bach. In regards to the... Just curious what the road repair schedule or the road overlay schedule is in the park. Maybe, maybe that's Tom, maybe that's you. I'm not sure who, who approves that. I just noticed that some of the roads in the park were getting, starting to show some pretty good wear. I wonder if they were on the schedule or where they, where they stand.
Yes, so the, the, I guess, the western half of the park was done a couple of years ago. Paved through there and the eastern half, more or less, most eastern half is on the list. And so it's, we were talking about that today. I got, I need to look and see, but it is. If it's not this year, it will be next year. I mean, it's while it has some surface unraveling, it's just, it's been micro and other things over the years. It's ready to be built and taken out, so.
Specifically the park down by Candy Cane, down in front of the dock down there. I just noticed it was kind of starting, looked like it was starting to show some wear. So I just didn't know where it was on the schedule.
Yeah, like Candy Cane, all your, by the old pool loop and then up that entrance there and, and all the way down across the Rothwell Lake Crossing and all that. Up to the top of the hill there all needs to be taken care of probably one shot.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Kimmons, did you have one?
Good.
You're good? Mr. McEwen?
Yeah. Tom, I noticed in the report it said something about the easements and things for South Morley. We're having trouble with, or haven't made contact with a few of them. Do we run any risk of that holding us up if we don't get those? Do we have a contingency plan there or?
We only have three permanent easements and they're very small. Almost all the work is going to occur inside of the actual right of way. We just needed some temporary, and I think on most of the temporary easements, we can do workarounds where the contractor can stay out of the right of ways. I don't think it's going to delay us. So I mean, I'd rather I'm having it be as quick as possible. Nobody's going to be encroached on their property with any of the construction. And we've had town hall meetings where we've shown everybody that wanted to attend that. We've sent all those diagrams, so I, I think you're just going to have a few that are just not going to do it and I think we can work around those.
Okay, that's good to hear. And then Troy, I have the unfortunate reality of two of my kids play soccer. And they, the, the parking out there is atrocious. Is there anything that we can do or need to be doing as a city to help alleviate some of that?
Sure, we've, we've been looking at that with a whole site planned. And that's a piece of it with Devon Snodgrass. We've been visiting with Massa folks also as recently as last Friday. About 18 months ago, we extended that east parking lot 80 feet. And then broadened it about 10 feet on either side just to help alleviate the bottleneck. Oftentimes we've had, you know, I assume you're referring to sometimes people are parking on Shepherd Boulevard. So we've, we've put the signage out because, you know, someone's eventually going to get hit there. And sometimes when people are parking on Shepherd Boulevard, you have people parked at 68 feet apart where you can't get a vehicle in between. So some of it's going to come down to people parking more efficiently, not bringing trucks and trailers, which happens from time to time. But we are in a more medium and long-term sense looking at.
Have you been out there on a Saturday morning?
I, I drive by several times a day.
Okay. So, okay. I just, and I don't know what our role is out there, but you know, it... Temporary, we're going to have a shooting out there one of these days for people not being able to get in our parking spots.
It's definitely outgrowing the, the footprint. So we're looking at some, some options for future growth.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have any other questions? Nope. Great. Thanks. Thank you for the department heads for filling those out. It's always very helpful. Under the subheading, anything else to come before the council, we do need to make our appointments for the liaisons to the various boards and commissions. So currently, the downtown community improvement district is myself, Brandon Lucas, Historic Preservation Board, John Kimmons, Parks and Recreation Board, Mike Scubick, Planning and Zoning Commission, Brandon Lucas and Chuck McEwen, and Tourism Advisory Commission, Sarah Graff. I would entertain a motion to approve as listed. We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. We have our council liaisons for the next year established. Number 31, public comments. So if there is anyone that would like to address the council, now would be the time to come forward and state your name and your address. You'll have four minutes to say your comment. You might want to make sure that microphone is on.
Hello.
There you go. You got it.
My name's Debbie Majors. My home is at 1156 County Road 2311 in Mobley. But I'm actually here concerning a house I have in town. My son has lived in it for like the last 10 years and he's got a job working for a union where he travels and he stays in his camper and it's been empty two years. And I decided to rent it. I know people I'm going to rent it to. I trust them. So I called for an inspection, like you're supposed to do, and they came and gave me an inspection. They told me what to do. I had no problem with that. I'm like, he asked me when I expected to have my tenants. I'd like to have them there May the 1st. I mean, the house is excellent condition. I just needed to do a... For the water heater. I just needed to do a, for the water heater, a disconnect and a couple of the wiring in the garage, whatever that GFI. I have no problem with that, but then a few days later, I get this letter in the mail that's like a threat to me. I feel like it's a threat because I have thirty days to get this done. And I told him I wouldn't have it done in thirty days. My son works out of town in Kansas, seven, ten hour days. I cannot move his cars. This is why I'm moving him out of his house because I want to clean the property up myself because I have standards above his. I'm sorry to say, but I do. I just feel like, given me thirty days to move it, I'm going to get upset because I have, I run a daycare, so I work sixty hours a week. I take care of my mom every night. My husband has terminal cancer, so I'm doing this all myself. And I did not appreciate a threatening letter giving me thirty days if they're going to move it and charge me. My son is thinking he's going to get off on the twenty-eighth, this job will end, okay? He works five-thirty till three-thirty in the morning in Kansas. Then he has to move his camper. I'm hoping he can get here and move this stuff. I would like to get my tenants in, but I understand the house should pass. But I know if I have him come and check this, they're still going to say, and there is stuff piled on the concrete out back, you know? And I did move the muffler shell that they said's in the yard, but it was in the driveway. I'm doing the best I can. I just wish I could get my tenants in there because they're staying with their mom and dad right now because they can't get into the house. I am allowing them to put their furniture in there. I hope that's okay, but they're not staying there. But I just wish I could let them be in there and give me, I should have this out of there by the first of the month, but I think this was pushing, this was pushing too much, getting this.
Yeah.
When I'm trying, I come to you all. I could have said I'll move in, leave it in my son's name, but I didn't. I'm trying to do things the right way. I think you all need to, when you're a law-abiding citizen trying to do it the right way, don't be so pushy.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Point, point taken. And we, we thank you for, for coming and sharing the information and the experience with us. We'll, we'll talk with the appropriate people and see if there's anything that, you know, that we can do, you know, to make things better. But we don't know about things like that unless you come and tell us, and so we appreciate that very much.
I totally agree. And that's why I'm here, just to let you know.
Absolutely. Yep, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else to come before the council? Okay. Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn to work session followed by a closed session to discuss the status of negotiated contract matters.
So moved.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McKeon?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Okay. We are adjourned from normal council meeting. We're right into work session. Okay, number one, replacement of lighting at police department firing range. Sounds exciting.
Good evening. So this project started a little before I took this position, but I'm pretty familiar with it. The wiring and the lights at the firing range are outdated. The wiring's actually framed, causing some electrical issues, potentially could turn actually into a fire. So we had, we put out some bids. We had a couple contractors went out and looked at it, gave us their recommendations. We're looking anywhere from nine to twelve lights. The current lights are the old, I'd call the halogen lights. You can't hardly see with them. We're going to replace them with the new LED lights and also the red lights for night shooting. Anybody as familiar as that? It doesn't affect your night vision. So it's a project we feel like to keep our exist, existing, excuse me, existing structure there without burning down. We probably would like to look into this.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for chief? Nope. Okay. Any objection to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it very much. Then number two, we've got a resolution of support for, I'm sorry, a resolution of support for participation in the Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program.
So the Blue Shield Program was Executive Order twenty-five dash zero three. Governor Kehoe passed this order to set ten million dollars aside for public safety agencies for training and equipment. To be eligible, you have to sign up for the, the program and it requires a resolution from the city council to be able to proceed to that.
Anything in particular that you're looking to purchase with that grant?
Not at the moment, but we do look at local block, block grants during the, the year. And I think some of those grants are going to be kind of put on hold for a while with some of the federal programs falling down to DPS. So I think this may substitute some of those. So we may look into maybe some equipment later on, but we just wanted to be prepared ahead of time, so.
Very good. We like grants.
Yes, sir.
We like free money, for sure. Any questions regarding number two for the Missouri Blue Shield Grant Program? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we'll move that one forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Number three, receipt of infill housing proposals for ten twenty-nine Concanon Street from Pretz Contracting LLC.
Proposal is a standardized properties, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath house, you know, not just under a thousand square feet. And, you know, looking for resale, not be owner occupied is the plan.
Is there any limit to how many infill lots a person can have at one time?
No, not as long as they're keeping proactive on them. I mean, they're turning them around pretty quickly.
With, are they going to be able to do all of these in, in, within a year?
The holdup on several of them right now are the fact that some of them, this one does not have a quick, or this one has a, a, open title. So a lot of them are the ones that are pending right now that no action's taking place on are the ones where, when they have a collector's deed and they have to go through a quiet title process and takes sometimes six, eight months to get that turned around. We have several of our contractors that are on hold on those, and so we give them a grace period on those because of the title circumstances.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions? Any objections to moving this forward to the next council meeting? Okay, I'll move this one forward. Number four, supplemental agreement number two to engineering services contract for the Route EE Sidewalk Project.
This one's extending the contract timeframe for the Bartlett West for the Rollins Street Sidewalk Project. That's been under design and project. It's, it's going to bid out here any day, so, or, you know, it's, it's coming around. So, but we just had to extend their timeframe of the contract.
Okay. Don't have any questions on that one? Anybody else? Okay, any objections to moving that one forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one over. Number five, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a trailer valve maintenance unit from Wox Utility Products to assist in exercising water main valves to maintain maximum operability.
Yeah, so it took me three tries.
Explain, sir.
Yes, yes. So, you know, we have an age system. I think you all know that. And I have a very, very recent example of water main valves that do not function as they should. When that happens, we have to extend an outage area to shut water off to do work. And so what this trailer will do, well, we're going to routinely exercise valves. We're basically going, trying to find failures, not in an emergency, but on our time. And that'll help us to plan for future replacements, maintenance repairs and so forth.
What is, so this machine, does it just, you got a little arm that goes down there and, and does its thing, is that?
Yeah, it's quite impressive. We watched the demo, I don't know, several months ago. There's a hydraulic arm that swings out and there's a valve operating stem that goes down on the valve. And then this thing, it's got torque setting, so, you know, I won't say we can't tear a valve up, but there's protections in place to torque the valve. And if it, it senses the torque, it'll back the valve off, all the proper ways to operate a valve.
Traditionally, traditionally what happens, are the valves generally rusted and they just, they won't turn or are they just inoperable? What generally happens in that scenario?
That's a good question. So here's a common practice, and this is not just Moberly related, I've seen this in several other communities where a valve gets installed, they're supposed to be, as a best practice, exercised annually. I've never seen a community do that, like, on pace. So when they, when they do actually get exercises, when you have a problem. So we have a main break, we've got an issue, hey, let's turn the valve. And that's when typically people find out, oh, it doesn't work. So does that answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. I think so. This, ultimately it, it limits the, the outage areas. If we have a break downtown, we don't have to shut off a bunch of people that we, could be a problem.
Absolutely, yeah. So this, this doesn't fix everything overnight. I mean, we, you know, we're, it's going to take some effort and some staying on track to do this, to get this system back to what I call a model system.
Very good. Very good. Proactive approach. Anybody have any questions regarding valve exerciser? Any objections to moving this one forward to the next council meeting? Okay. Thank you, sir. We'll move this one forward. Number six, receipt of bids for the sidewalk curb replacement.
We received three bids this year. As you can see, two were very competitive, very close, top line, Adam, six oh four and six forty, and then one was at fifty-two dollars. And although it was consistent throughout their, the bids there, DMC, who is our current contractor, the vast majority of the work we do is for four-inch and six-inch concrete sidewalks and then curb and gutter and so on. All of those, they were the cheapest or equal to on the curb and gutter. You've seen it's about twenty-five dollars a foot. The third bidder was not in the ballpark. On some of the thicker concrete items, DMC was higher than Albright. However, that's, that's a, probably ninety percent of our concrete work is the four and six inches. So for those reasons, we're recommending going with the lower price on those units.
Okay.
DMC on it.